Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call this meeting to order.
7:03 PM.
7:03 PM. And if you can, will you please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag with us?
To the flag. The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. This time, roll call, please.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett.
Present.
Alderman Davis.
Here.
Alderman Spivey. Alderman Edwards.
Here.
Alderman Hudson.
Present.
Mayor Ford.
Present. Okay, thank you. Cassius is not here. Can you do the honors for us today? Thank you so much, appreciate that. Okay, at this time, we have the general proceedings on the agenda.
General proceedings, approval of the city council meeting minutes for February 12th.
Second.
Okay, are there any corrections or questions? Here are no questions or corrections, roll call, please.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderman Spivey.
Yes.
Alderman Edwards.
Yes.
Alderman Hudson.
Yes.
All right, motion carries, thank you so much. Next, we have communications and reports by the mayor. At this time, I would like to ask our fire chief, Michelle, if you can come forward, please.
Is that my phone?
Yes.
It is with Javi Sanz that we announced the passing of Fire Chief Joe Ellington retired this morning. Chief Ellington started in the fire service in 1976 after serving in the United States Air Force. Chief Ellington started his career with the Harvey Fire Department in 1976. He held the rank of firefighter, engineer, lieutenant, and captain. During this time, he also served the residents of Flossmore as a volunteer for the Flossmore Volunteer Fire Department. Upon leaving Harvey Fire Department, he was hired by Riverdale Fire Department as the Assistant Fire Chief. He finished his career with the Country Club Hills Fire Department where he held the Deputy Chief position and retired as the Fire Chief. Chief Ellington spent time as a fire inspector with all four fire departments he was with. He was a valuable liaison between fire departments and businesses in the communities he served. In addition to his time in the fire service, Chief Ellington worked for Ingalls Memorial Hospital as a security officer. Chief Ellington was one of the pioneer African-American paramedics in the Ingalls Paramedic Program under Dr. Bernie Heilixer. Chief Ellington was a big proponent of teamwork and a lover of safety. "Safety first" and "teamwork," everybody working together, were two of his favorite expressions. We will make sure to send out all the arrangements. When they have been finalized, please keep his wife, Margaret, and his daughter, Yolanda Ellington Reese, as well as all of his friends and fire department extended family in your prayers. I would like to say the fireman's prayer now in memory of Joe. "When I am called to duty, God, whenever flames may rage, give me the strength to save some life, whatever be its age. Help me embrace a little child before it is too late, or save an older person from the horror of that fate. Enable me to be alert and to hear the weakest shout, and quickly and efficiently put the fire out. I want to fill my calling and to give the best in me, to guard my every neighbor and protect their property. And if according to your will I have to lose my life, please bless with your protecting hand, my children and my wife." Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Chief, for that fireman's prayer. Do we have any family members in the audience?
No, Mayor, but may I be recognized?
Go ahead, head.
Yes, I visited the Elletons this afternoon, spoke with the wife and the daughter, and they will be keeping in touch with me. I do serve them as their public servant, as the alderman, and I will let the officer of the mayor know as well as the elected officials when information comes to knowledge.
All right, thank you. Okay, with that said, just a couple announcements. I would like to recognize Mr. Leroy Barnes for as being elected as a new City Park and Rec Commission that was done a couple weeks ago. Thank you for volunteering.
Thank you, Mayor. Just like to thank each and every one of you all that attended that. I had kind of a packed room, and I got some feedback that some of my family were upset because they weren't invited, but certainly the mayor, the clerk, all the men and family members was here, and it was a joyous occasion, and I don't take it lightly, but I'm glad to be a part of Country Club Hills in that capacity. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm sure you're looking forward to serving with the Park District. Thank you so much. Secondly, I want to announce that the Fire and Police Commission and our intended swearing-in of three new police officers for the City of Country Club Hills. We have one new trained, trainee, I guess, and two laterals that were sworn in this last week, and we want to welcome them, and when the schedule allows, we would have them to come before the council to meet the elected officials. So, I just want to let you know that we have received three new officers to the police department, okay? With that said, then, I want to go to the committee reports, and, well, before I do that, let's go to the city clerks' report.
Thank you, Mayor. Early voting is ongoing through March 18th, and the presidential primary is scheduled for Tuesday, March 19th. Polling locations are on the website, lobby, and on the information table at the end. National Women's History Month, themed for 2024, celebrates women who advocate for equity, diversity, and inclusion. The theme recognizes women throughout the country who understand that for a positive future, we need to eliminate bias and discrimination entirely from our lives and institutions. We proudly salute, honor, and amplify the voices of extraordinary women who have played pivotal roles in shaping our legacy and continue to impact our world today. Our journey commenced with visionary women who dared to dream. Next Wednesday, March 20th, again, I am announcing, just to remind you, that the Illinois Toll Way and the State Treasurer's Office will be in the lobby of City Hall from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. The Toll Way will exchange those white transponders for small little stickers. They will actually give you a credit for the transponders and activate them, and it's a very easy process, so not just for Country Club Hills, any friends, family that are in the Southland, if they have time to come by, we will definitely be glad to have them. And lastly, just a reminder, with the time change, please check your smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors, put fresh batteries in them for safety. End of report, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I ask a question with the city clerk? Do you have to be present? Could someone drop those transponders off and they can do the change, or do you have to be?
You do have to be present because they need your driver's license, they need your information.
I'll let people know then.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we have on the agenda, we have the committee reports, and the first committee we have on the agenda tonight is the Finance Committee. Alderman Lockett is the chairperson.
Thank you, Mayor. Seeking council's approval for accounts payable in an amount of $667,794.31.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly motioned in second. Are there any comments, questions? Okay, here are no comments or questions, roll call, please.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderman Spivey.
Yes.
Alderman Edwards.
Yes.
Alderman Hudson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
End of my report.
All right, thank you. Next, we have Law and Ordinance's Government Operation.
Thank you, Mayor. My next meeting will be held April 9th, time will come later. Mayor, I understand that I will be seeking approval for amendment of Chapter 13, however, I think this is going to go back to council for further review. Attorney.
Yes, that's correct. The housing, I'm sorry, the...
Group homes.
The group home ordinance that was, that went to committee and you guys approved.
Yes.
John Murphy called it back today. He wanted to do some more work on it, and when he does that, then we'll bring it back to committee.
Okay.
So, with that for us tonight, we'll take it off the...
Scratch it from the agenda.
So, that's taken off the agenda. Are we going to motion the table? I'd like to make a motion to postpone the ordinance for Chapter 13 for the business licensing and/or permit of regulation by the adding of a new Article 39 titled "Group Home."
Second.
Alderman Lockett.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderman Spivey.
Yes.
Alderman Edwards.
Yes.
Alderman Hudson.
Yes.
Mayor, end of my report.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Today, we had three discussion items. The first was the right-of-way and parks. Those will be going back out to bid, and they'll be able to finish their contract April 30th, and they should start by May 1st, those two contracts, but the council, we should have them to be able to review by the beginning of April, so the two...
Review the contracts?
The two that are, the ones that are selected, yeah. They'll have to come before the council first, so...
That's the right-of-ways and the parks.
Those two, just those two contracts. The second item we had discussed was the, was the speed bumps, and they're going to be going out on the same list that we had. They're going to put those same speed bumps out, but if any alderman has any additional speed bumps, depending on, you know, the amount that we can get, you can just contact Mike who to let him know so they can review that and make sure that's appropriate. The third item was the trip hazards. We still have the grinding program through Safe Speed, which they're going to try to continue with that, so there's some other items other than the ones they're already aware of. Let Mike know about that as well. With that, that's the end of my report. Oh, and my next meeting will be scheduled for April 8th at 6:00 PM, and at that time, we're anticipating to have the, select the bids for the two landscape contract, the right-of-way and the parks. That's the end of my report.
All right.
Excuse me, Alderman. I have a question for you. Will that also include the housing for the...
No, that's different.
That's totally different.
Yeah, that's different.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
No other questions? All right. End of my report, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Next, we have Economic Development. Alderman Spivey, Chair.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to schedule a meeting for Economic and Development for next week that will be Wednesday, the 20th, 7:00 PM. And also, I'd just like to, I'd like to make an announcement that the signs are up for Heritage Plaza now, that was, that was supposed to be put in there for the sign, so everything is all good to go. End of my report.
All right. Thank you. Next, we have Education, Parks and Rec.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to personally thank the city council, Alderman Lockett, Alderman Davis, Alderman Hudson, Alderman Spivey, and the treasurer. We reached the amount of money to donate to New Roots, and I am proud that you are supporting our young people in high school by your donations. As of today, for STEM, we have 46 volunteers. We needed 46. We made that. For the 20th, we have 35 volunteers. We needed 56, so we still got to work a little bit harder, but we are reaching it. So, we will bring down probably 600 to 700 seniors for 40 minutes with their resumes. We'll be reading them and then openly critiquing them, and then the next group will come, and then the next group will come. Your donations provide at lunch for the volunteers. I also would like to schedule a meeting for March 25th at 6:00 PM. End of my report, and thank you again, council and the mayor.
All right, thank you. Next, I need a motion to...
6 o'clock.
Open the floor to the public.
Make a motion, open the floor to the public.
Second.
It's been properly motioned in second. Roll call, please.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderman Spivey.
Yes.
Alderman Edwards.
Yes.
Alderman Hudson.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Motion carries, public, if you would like to address the council, limit your time to three minutes or less, there's a clock on the wall to help you manage that time. Anyone would like to address the council?
Mayor Leroy Barnes, I would just like to say, you know, a lot, I've been to a lot of city council meetings, and I've heard the reports of the various committees that the aldermen oversee, and I just hadn't even thought about attending, but I did attend Law and Ordinance. It was an eye-opener because, you know, I found out some things that I didn't know, for instance, about the group homes. I didn't know how many group homes the City of Country Club even had, you know, and so if you come to these meetings, the city council meetings, and you attend, they know they're all open to the public, and I'm not sure if the public or the residents even know, but all of the committee meetings, and correct me if I'm wrong, are all open to the public. There's an opportunity, even the commission that I'm on, when we had that meeting that night, they said that we're open to the public. I didn't know that was open to the public either. So, you know, when you know better, you do better, and then this information can be disseminated amongst the residents so that they know they can come out and see what's occurring or what may occur, or what changes might happen prior to them happening, have a say or some comment, or how they feel about certain things that have changed in the City of Country Club Hills. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Commissioner Miguel Atkins from the Cultural Arts Commission, and I just want to take this time to thank Mayor Ford and the council and everyone that came in and helped for the Black History Black Expo we had last month. It was a total success, and you guys really showed out as a city. And on behalf of our co-chairperson, Paula Weber, Kristen Atkins, and Tony Murph, we just want to say thank you so much. Everything turned out very well, and we couldn't have done it without the support of the mayor and the council and the whole Country Club's, City of Country Club staff, and thank you, and hopefully we can work together in the future because we have a lot of things planned, and Doreen will definitely let you guys know what's going on with our committee, but thanks, and thanks again, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Keep up the good work. It was, it was a great event. Anyone else?
I'd like to make a motion, close the floor to the public.
Second.
It's been properly motioned in second. Roll call, please.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderman Spivey.
Yes.
Alderman Edwards.
Yes.
Alderman Hudson.
Yes.
All right, motion carries. At this time, we're going to hear from the alderman on the automatic reports, and if I'm correct, I think we start with Alderman Hudson's.
Correct. I got the ball, Mayor, thank you. Turnover. Okay, my automatic report. Mayor, just being redonies, but I just have to also congratulate Mr. Leroy Barnes on his new position as a commissioner for the Chicago Park District Board. Congratulations, Leroy. Also, in addition, Mayor, as you reported earlier, I also witnessed on the 5th, the swearing-in of the new officers. I was, it was very humble and mind-staining to see some new blood, young individuals ready to dedicate their time and professionalism to serve this beautiful City of Country Club Hills, so that was well-welcome. And unfortunate, Mayor, I'd like to give a moment of silence as well as, as we mentioned, Chief Joe Ellington, Mr. Sherman Garrett, who is the brother of Aruth Parker, who works for the Building Department, and also a young man that's from Ward 4, who was once a probationer on my caseload, Jaquan Foster. So, if I can have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. And as I end my report, I would like to say to everyone, if you see something, say something. Please call 911. End of my report.
Thank you. Alderman Davis.
Thanks, Mayor. I just want the mayor to mention that, or to the city, we have to make sure that, I mean, we have an ordinance about keeping our garbage cans out in front of our houses, so as the weather gets warmer, I know we're a little short on inspectors, but we have to move those garbage cans. It can't be in front of your garage. I mean, if you drive through the city, you find them all over the place, so that's something that you can't get sighted for, so we need to start putting those garbage cans up, so... Also, see, Mr. Graham in the audience, I thought you had something to say, but I do know that I was reached out from the mayor. I would recommend the issue that you have, any issue that a resident has, they're open to bring to us, so I know you shared with me many a times something you want to see happen. I would encourage you to come to the admin meeting and just present it to the whole council, so I'm not just ignoring your calls, the mayor reached out to you, but that's the appropriate way to, so that we can have some conversations about things. And that is the, and congratulations to the commissions. I commend anybody who volunteers and gives their time for the betterment of our city, so with that, that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Lockett.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to mention on Saturday, March 23rd, that Mayor Ford and the city council is going to host Spring Fling, and that's going to be Easter egg hunt, games, treats, craps. It's free, so bring your children out, make sure you stay with them and then...
You can't leave them?
Yeah, no, don't leave your kids.
Babysitter.
We have to call 911 then. But that's going to be at the Theater Campus, which is 4116 West 183rd, just right on the side of us here at City Hall, so that's Spring Fling, March 23rd, 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. So, bring the kids out and let them have some fun and get some eggs. And then also, in Rich Township, they're going to have an upcoming discussion, and this is for men only. Once again, it's for men only, and it's at the Rich Township Senior Citizen, Senior Center, 297 Liberty Drive in Park Forest, and that's from 12:00 PM to 2:00 PM, and they have several dates set for this, so February 9th, which is already passed, April 12th, June 14th, August 9th, and the rest of their dates are to be determined. So, if some guys want to do a men's retreat and have some discussion, you're all welcome to come. That's Rich Township Senior Center, 297 Liberty Drive, Park Forest, Illinois. And with that, that's the end of my report.
Is there an age restriction?
No age restriction, any ages, 18 and up, but it's just no women, it's all men.
All right. Thank you. Next will be Alderman Spivey.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to congratulate Mr. Barnes to the Park District for Southern Country Club Hills. Thank you, Mr. Atkins, for the serving on the commission. We had a great time with the Black History event, it was very well put together. Also, I would like to thank Chief Galvin for all the extra policing that is going on in the fourth ward. Also, there is a tip line, if you see something, say something, 708-206-2899. Also, I would like to thank the Public Works for making sure that the signage is up in Heritage Plaza. It's been a long task to get that taken care of, but now it's finally done, and I really want to thank them for making sure that, that the proper signage is up in Heritage Plaza That's the end of my report.
All right. Alderman Edwards?
Thank you, Mayor. Starting tomorrow, I will be surveying Ward 1 to look for street repairs, sidewalk repairs. I'm also working with District 144 to, especially Nob Hill, to be able to be on a committee to help them improve their school. We raised over $1,050, the council did, for the New Roots, which I'm very proud. I had some neighbors come to me about the issue, I won't talk about it now, but I'm on it, I'm organizing, I'll let you know later, Mayor, what's going on. And I'm trying to make sure that our Park District Summer Program has the pool fixed for the young people to go to so they don't have to go to Matson, so I'm going to meet with the principal up at 228, just to talk to him about making sure that the pool is fixed this summer. End of my report, Mayor, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Alderman Lockett has mentioned the man cave. I just want everybody to know that this was an innovative program, and our Rich Township, which includes half of Country Club Hills, we won an state award from the State of Illinois for this innovative program. So, I recommend all men to come at least one of these dates, April 12th, June 14th, or August 9th, and get some healthy information and discussions and do some screening, and you'll be, it's well, well worth your time to come for one of these meetings that we have here. You'll learn a lot, and Dr. Cherry Mason is very good in this program, so I have additional flyers if you'd like. Also, Rich Township and Olympia Fields Park District is also having an Easter Jamboree at 20712 Western Avenue, Saturday, March 30th, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. It's going to be brunch with the Easter Bunny, and you can bring your camera, take pictures. Also, you can do an Easter egg hunt, so you can do twice, you can do it here at Country Club Hills on the 23rd, right? And then you, and then you can come to Olympia Fields, Rich Township, and get some more eggs for the kids on the 30th. That's Saturday, so thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, just a couple things here on the Spring Fling, do we have extra flyers?
I need one.
In the lobby, Mayor.
Okay, can we put some in? You want some in your mailbox?
Yeah.
Make some extra ones and put them in the alderman's mailboxes.
Certainly.
So, they can pass them out. Second thing is that one of our employees, Rutha Parker downstairs, lost her brother on Friday, and so I'm asking that we just take a few minutes of silence for that and also keep our family in our prayers. All right, thank you. With that...
Mayor, may I be recognized?
We have, the clerk and I have a question for you before you run out tonight. What else?
Thank you. I just wanted to also share about the employment opportunities that the City of Country Club Hills has available. We are looking for public works laborers, we're looking for camp counselors for the summer camp, Director Johnson, wave your hand, definitely looking for some help there. We are looking for director of public works, still looking for lateral police officers, we are looking for water operator, media coordinator, assistant water supervisor, building inspector, full-time and part-time, finance director, and CSOs. And we also have applications that we will pass down to the information table. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Also, Alderman Davis, if you got a second or two before you run out, I need to talk to you as well. I think that's it.
I'd like to make a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly motioned in second. Roll call, please.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderman Spivey.
Yes.
Alderman Edwards.
Yes.
Alderman Hudson.
Yes. Before I say anything else, do you have anything, attorney? All right.
7:32 PM.
All right, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, you'd like to speak to the mayor or the council, come forward.